Evening. Oh, wow. This is a little louder today. Okay. Someone turned up the mic. Welcome to the February 3rd, 2025 School Committee Budget Workshop. And like every meeting, we will get started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I'll start by reading Danvers Public Schools' mission statement. "Danvers Public Schools is a dynamic community of independent learners dedicated to respect, responsibility, creativity, and the pursuit of academic and personal excellence." This meeting is being broadcast on Danvers Community Access Television. Is anyone in the audience recording the proceedings? Okay, no mention. We do know that today's focus is on the budget workshop, but we do want to bring up one item of interest, which is, you know, the, you know, the recent, you know, things that we're seeing in the media and hearing within the community, specifically around, you know, the immigration status of, you know, some of our, you know, neighbors and citizens, and some of the concerns and fears that have been kind of being spread. There's little misinformation going around. So I was happy to have a conversation with Mr. Bauer about it. Good to hear that some information has been shared with faculty and some of the administration. But I've asked Mr. Bauer to, you know, share that communication. And there'll be some other things coming forward, but I'd invite any commentary from the committee. And I'll hand it over to Mr. Bauer.
Great. Thank you, Chair Lopes. Indeed, we've been working on the item as one of the things that's really important to us is safe school environment for all students. And certainly, as there's been an awareness of immigration and student status, we've done a lot of work collaborating with our school attorneys. We've collaborated with the chief police. We also collaborated with the district attorney. And we also follow the Attorney General's guidelines in terms of safe schools and particularly the release of information. So we did share information with our administrative team so that our principals and our administrative team understand the process that if there's an immigration status challenge, that we have a process that we follow. And again, we follow the code, we follow the law, but student rights are protected as under the law. So we sent an email out to our staff at the end of last week because there are questions that arise. And we want to provide information to our faculty to let them know that we have a process and a procedure that we follow as a district. And we're also working at things at the school level to support all students. So the email it said stated that we emphasize we adhere to the guidelines established by the Attorney General of Massachusetts concerning the sharing of student information and access to school facilities. So there's a set of guidelines that we attached from the Attorney General and updated a set of guidelines. And we protect student information and consultation with our school attorneys. As I mentioned, we talked with Chief Lovell, as well as our DA Paul Tucker of Essex County. So if a federal agent would arrive at a school, the principal would contact the superintendent and request that that person go to the central office. And that would be for, if there would ever be a question for any student for anything that they would need if it's not the parent or guardian, they would be directed right to my office. And the protocol is from there, you know, if there is a warrant or a need, then we would consult with our school attorney and ask for guidance. If there's a criminal warrant, we'll adhere to legal advice, as we would in any case. We do not have the authority to release children into the custody without the order of court competent jurisdiction or the parent or guardian's consent. This is consistent for all students. We've discussed our protocols with the principals and the administrative team. And the principals, they'll follow up in faculty meetings or early release on Wednesday with our curriculum directors. And they're always available to answer any questions. The reminders that are important to note is that all school-aged children in Massachusetts are entitled to attend school regardless of their or their parents' immigration status. And two, we do not gather maintained data relative to immigration status. There's also DESI guidelines that we've submitted to our staff and to our administrative team. And I think it's important that we state that our schools remain committed to providing a safe and positive learning environment for all students. First of all, Danvers Public Schools' mission is to educate all students regardless of race, gender, religion, ethnicity, or immigration status. And the other thing that I'd like to add too is that, you know, with heightened awareness, you know, we just also want to reiterate that, you know, it-related bullying or harassment are prohibited in all Massachusetts schools. And schools must investigate any alleged incidents, respond effectively, and take steps to create a positive school climate where students feel safe, supported, and respected. Our administrative team, they're aware of that. And certainly, if there's any items that appear of any retaliatory nature or any harassment, that our administrative team will deal with promptly. And if there are any questions, anybody should reach out to our administration or reach out to me directly.
Thank you for that. Any comments to go with that?
Yeah. I'm glad to hear you. I knew you were taking proactive steps.
Oh, Fred.
I knew you were taking proactive steps, and I'm glad you did that. But what it comes down to is, I think it's a policy of the school committee that everybody, every student feel to the extent possible safe, feels secure in their person, feels emotionally supported in their schools, feels welcomed for who they are as an individual, feels as though they are connected to their schools, feels as though they have the educational supports that they need to get the most out of their abilities and to get the best education we can give them. It is that simple, whatever people want to call it, whatever names or acronyms people want to put on it. The fact is that what we want to do is give all students, regardless of white, black, brown, regardless of sexual orientation, regardless of anything. All the students who come here should be safe and get the best education that you all can give them. And so we support you in doing that, and we'll stand behind you as we go forward. Thank you.
Mike?
As I shared with the superintendent a couple of days ago, it was brought to my attention that there were more than several parents concerned citizens over this issue. So I just want to thank you for sharing our policies publicly and that to just reinforce that safe and secure schools are a priority with us. And again, thank you for doing that.
Wow. Okay. Thank you for that. And again, thank you, Mr. Bauer. I know we spent quite a bit of time with that. And now we'll go into the fiscal year '26 budget presentation.
Great. Thank you, Chair Lopes. Thank you to the school committee. This exercise or workshop will be very similar to last year's. We felt it was beneficial to get your feedback as we put together the best budget possible. Ultimately, the goal is for the 24th of February to come back with our budget hearing, to settle on our final number that we will send forward to the select board and go through that process. So the annual process, it's year-round and really picks up steam November through February, really, where we look at our budget priorities, we look at our needs, receive the budget priorities from the town. Then we present and work and try to go through multiple iterations of the budget to ultimately bring our final, well, at least our working budget to the school committee tonight for further work, a public hearing, as I said, at the end of the month. But then in March, we go to the select board, April to the finance committee and an annual town meeting. And then before we know it, July 1st, we have our fiscal year begins and we start all over again. And I just want to note that as we go through the process, Pam Crum, our business manager is here, Mary Warmer is here as well, and they'll assist with any questions that come up, as well as our presenters. But this budget really is not the work of just the central office. It's important to note that it's a collaborative process. We work with our leadership, they work with their schools and departments. We look over what we accomplished last year and areas that we need to grow for this year, and certainly look at areas to sustain and grow. We made multiple presentations, we had a dry run of this last week, and appreciate our AC team for really working hard on this. And I think the number one thing is to realize that we have budget goals. And the budget goals set forth by the town, as well as the budget goal that we've taken under direction from the school committee is to create a level service budget, right? So the same level of services as last year, and that's what we put together. Continue to improve special education programming. We had a number of audits last year, and we actually have another audit coming up this spring for a therapeutic, look for data to help put together planning for improvements. And then I think the key really is sustainability with any plans we put together. So we have to be fiscally responsible, but also responsive to the needs of our students and our staff. And then also looking at our district improvement plan, strategic plan. How can we support and improve student achievement, which is critical, as well as a sense of belonging, which we just talked about earlier? So I went the wrong way. The budget pressures, though, that we face, they're real. Just to go over a high level, that our Chapter 70 funding, which we find out really about two weeks ago or so, we're at the foundational level this year. Last year, we received $104 per student on top of our foundational budget. This year, it's $75 per student, so it's less that has come in. We also know that we're working to do the best that we can to flatten the curve without district placements. And again, that ebbs and flows, of course, the needs of our students, that's first and foremost. And as we build programs to support students to hopefully reduce that. Transportation costs, we know, are certainly, we're trying to do the best that we can to flatten the curve and control the uncontrollables. I know that's an oxymoron, but really, it's something we're working on. Contractual obligations, and I feel proud that the school committee and our administrative team worked really hard to successfully negotiate all four contracts last spring. And I think that's a big, big plus. You know, the community showed the support for our teachers and our support staff. And that's something that we're working with to make sure that we're able to provide for our staff. Curricular needs always change and shift, and then inflationary increases. We always look to maximize resources. So as we go through the process of looking at our needs, we also couple that with areas of our resources, knowing that we're very appreciative of the large allocation last year and knowing that we need to put something together that, you know, at times, we need to make sure we look within ourselves to be as efficient as possible. We're a large organization, but we need to make sure that every cent that we have is being spent appropriately. So, you know, on the salary line, which is most of our budget, you know, being able to utilize and reallocate anything there that's possible through retirements, attrition, moving on. That's the number one thing that we always try to do with personnel. The non-salried piece, which is not as big, but very important. We look for grant opportunities, and Mary and her team did a fantastic job of doing that because those are items not in the budget. And try to push off those non-salried needs, if we can, those one-times, into areas that might be supported by the grants or other things, such as our town warrants. Again, flattening the curve of transportation. And we'll talk more about it. David Polsifer, our director of transportation, will talk more about how we've added vans. We're looking to add two more vans. And then also our plan to hopefully reduce overall expenditures on transportation by 10%. And our district costs, they continue to rise, but we continue to build our three strands, our autism strand, our therapeutic and language-based programming. And last year, we were provided a large allocation to help make improvements with that. But we know that we have lots of work to do. So the grant-funded opportunities, over $684,000 that were brought in to do a number of things. So Mary, if you wouldn't mind just talking to a few of the grants?
Sure. So you see the list of grants up there. We have two major grants that are over $100,000. One was the Supporting Students Social, Emotional Learning, Behavioral, Mental Health and Wellness. And we've talked about that a few times at these school committee meetings, where we're building that multi-tier system of support so that not only do we have a strong baseline curriculum for this work, which we call Tier One, but we also have interventions, strong interventions that are matched with the student needs. So that's the work we'll be doing this year with that. And then also, this was a multi-year grant that was worked on by Jim Sullivan and Peter Demaro, myself. It's called the Skills, Capital, Technology, and Equipment Grant. And we're really excited because this helps us build out our career pathway at Danvers High School. And so it's in two areas where we were in need of getting more equipment so that it was a more robust pathway. So it's around the health and the social services area. That's one area where we'll spend a lot of money. And then the other one is in environmental engineering. So these are exciting projects to be working on. The other grants are, some of them are continuation that we applied for again, for a second time, and got. So the Carnegie Grant up at the top are curriculum programs that the Carnegie Foundation is funding, along with Department of Education, to get materials. That was great. And then the second one's the 1-8 Discovery Program, which Holt Richmond Middle School was accepted to this year. And then the Danvers High School is continuing on Year Two. And so the Year Two gets more money because the work gets harder, and you're expanding the work through the high school, and that's around applied learning. So again, we have the Capital Skills Grant that's going to help us bring those pathways. And then we also are working with all teachers to really expand out so that we have more student engagement and we have more authentic learning experiences in classrooms. Other grants are the Early College Grant that we work with at North Shore Community College, the Hate Crimes Grant, which allows us to work with the Northeastern Center for Support and Society, and then do some great things like Next Gen, fund the work of Next Gen and those activities that they do. And then we continue on with the Civics Grants that we've gotten for a second year so that we have, we can really strengthen the civics projects that we do at the middle school and high school level, as well as bring civics curriculum into the elementary. And the remaining grants are helping some of our needy learners that the Department of Ed has allocated extra money for. So we wrote for that and got those. And then, oh, the last one that's exciting is the Supporting Arts and Cultural Vitality Teams. That just came. It's a small amount of money, but it's really to work on articulating our vision for arts, visual arts, but also instrumental in musical arts through K through 12. So we're all going to have a nice vertical alignment of our program and really be able to strengthen, you know, we already have a strong program, but really bring that to life.
So I think it's important to note that that's a substantial amount of money that we pulled in through a lot of hard work. But the key is, if you break this down, it supports our student achievement, sense of belonging, which is critical, but also ways that we can be innovative with our practices so that we prepare our students to be best prepared when they walk out of our doors, and it ties into our portrait of the graduate work. Emergency Assistance Program is separate funding as it was last year. And this fund comes in from the state. And so positions that we've brought aboard to support our newcomers, those are not reflected in our budget and will not be again this year. We have received funding separately to provide anything for our students, including transportation, as well as curriculum, as well as staffing. And we're fortunate that we received an allocation recently. And we're hearing that we'll receive further allocations through the remainder of the school year with the governor's supplemental budget. So that's very important because the expenditures allow us to do a lot. And I will say that not only has this money helped us with our newcomers, but we've used this to help support all students in our district. So as we know, the shelters are coming to an end, and the funding will be ended at this year. But we're working really hard to coordinate transportation reimbursements, some under McKinnon Eventos, some under this program. And any remaining money that's left, we're able to move forward to next year. And that was a big help to us this year to fund these positions because they're not in the operating budget, but they're desperately needed. And although the shelters themselves are closing down, our needs of our multilingual students will still remain, and we'll still have a substantial number in our district. And we also have all students that need services. So we're able to take this and utilize this funding to help support our schools. But the funding is coming to the end, as well as the sheltered program. And strategic planning for the future. I think really, as we talk about building our special education programming, it's key to note that sustainability is important, right? And I think we were very thoughtful last year. As we noted with the substantial ask, we've been able to utilize those positions and quite frankly, many more positions that we've been able to provide with some of the alternate funding to provide the best experience for our students, build our programming. And we want these to not only be fiscally responsible, but stand the test of time as we build. And I think that's important. It's a, you know, we know the economy is teetering right now, and it has been. And certainly, we know that we are in good shape or sound financially as a district, and we have a good collaboration with the town, and schools are supported. But we need to continue building the programming, right? The work is not done. And the audits, as I mentioned earlier, will provide directions to continue building our programs. But we definitely need more support for each program and build up that level of team chairs, which will help change our practices, again, to keep flattening the curve. There's some things that we're just not going to ask for this year because we understand we're still in the process of building, right? And taking the audit information and being smart in putting together something that's sustainable. The other thing is, we're working really hard to save in transportation. The regionalization of transportation through the Northeastern Educational Collaborative is coming to fruition. And that is taking all 22 member schools, looking for ways that we can connect and share transportation with hopefully a 10% reduction in those costs, which is big. David will talk more about that. As well as our in-district transportation, which is exciting. And then also, again, looking at our staffing and being able to move with best fits we have and support our staff. But also, we're on the verge of our strategic plan that we're developing. It's in progress, looking for the future. Portrait of the learner, what is important for our students to have when they graduate from our schools. How can we drill this down K through 12? And ideally, planning our budget, a budget ask in the future, meet those needs. So at this time, I'd like to turn this over. Our teams worked really hard, and each team member will come up and present their slides. And obviously, it'd be available for any questions throughout the process. Before we begin, are there any general questions before we bring the presenters up? Okay. So our first presentation will be from Jim Sullivan, our Director of Technology and Integration. Jim has put together a great budget presentation, and I'll manage the slides for him.
Good evening. This is a great setup here. Technology, I love this. Good evening. My name is Jim Sullivan, Director of Technology. Thank you for having me. Here to present the budget request for technology for FY '26. Just on the cover slide, real quick, I wanted to highlight the two pictures here. The one on the left, actually, they're both generated by AI, which I thought was kind of interesting. So I asked AI to create, you know, a picture of technology in a classroom today, and that's what it presented on the left with the smartboards and the laptops, which I thought was interesting. And I asked it to also tell me, or show me what the classroom of the future would look like, which is this very interesting picture on the right of some kind of VR or AI. Really cool thing going on there of the future. I can't really explain it, but that's what AI is telling us is the future, just in case you're wondering. So. But next slide. So my presentation today, there's not a lot of new or different in the presentation today, but it's really accounting for a lot of, you know, a lot of things that have been, you know, purchased that we've been using that were previously covered under grants or they were covered under, you know, different funding sources and, you know, bringing them together under our, you know, our operating budget moving forward as some of those projects have come to an end. And also looking at, we have a new position in the technology department that I actually started today around data processing and working with the schools and Power School moving forward as well, which is great. So the first step, which is the salary request, this is the new data processing administrative assistant. This position is new, but it was a position that was repurposed from inside the district. The difference is, which why there's a little cost attached to this is it's a position that moved from like a Level One to a Level Two position because it's a little more technical. But the person in this role, their goal is to work with the school offices to, you know, make sure that, you know, school and student data is up to date and that they, you know, support the school offices in their needs around Power School and data management. And also working with our data manager, who actually is new as well, just started this year after our database manager, Lisa, retired after 13 years. So this is a, this is a support role really for all of our schools, not just for technology. But, you know, the goal is to make, you know, create some efficiencies and also, you know, make sure, you know, the data is, you know, valid and accurate, which we know is very important in our world.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Can you explain that total cost?
So the total cost, that is, the difference between the original position was a Level One Administrative Assistant, and it was transitioned to a Level Two position because of the more technical nature of it.
Okay. So it's like the net between?
Yes.
Before and after. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. In terms of non-salaried requests, these are some of the licenses and softwares that were previously purchased under grants, whether it was ESER or other funding sources that we still actively use in the district. And we're looking to bring those into the technology operating budget. Some of those include Zoom, our new emergency alert system, InformaCast. It's available at all of our schools. Elevation, which manages, you know, works with our ESL and data reporting programs. The vape detection software that's used in the bathrooms at the middle and high school. Notion, which is our technology documentation. We were using the free version. We ran out of pages, so we had to upgrade. But also some of the learning software, Sibellius, which is a music notation software that's used at high school, and Apex Distance Learning, which is some additional licenses for to support students at high school. One of the other requests, Admins Munis. So this is, as I think most of you know, this is the financial software that the town uses to manage things town-wide. Historically, the town, the schools have always paid a portion of that software, which hasn't changed. However, up until now, it's been something that's typically just been charged somewhere. It's been unbudgeted. So just in terms of, you know, promoting a little more transparency, we're adding an actual line to the budget just to account for that cost that already exists. One of the other things that we're looking to do is, the district has never had a line of funding to maintain some of our safety equipment, such as two-way radios, some of the alerting or access control pieces that we have throughout our buildings. So typically, when something breaks or something stops working, or we need to buy something new. You know, usually I work with Pam. We try to find some source throughout the district. But, you know, we're hoping to add, you know, a line just so that we know that there's funding available for some of those safety.
I have one question on that slide. On the Apex Distance Learning software, is that for unlimited students? Or do we have a cap on that? And what we do have, you feel that we're utilizing it, you know, fully?
We are utilizing it. So this is actually to accommodate, this year, we actually added more students to it, and this is to accommodate those additions. Go.
One quick question before we move on to the next slide. So I know it's lumped into that 33K, but the Zoom software, do we still, are we still utilizing Zoom district-wide?
We are. We actually, a lot of, it's used a lot at the secondary level, but also at the administrative. We actually, a lot of, it's used a lot at the secondary level, but also at the administrative level as well. So a lot of the meetings that we, that we stream out, we use the, what can I think of? The webinar version of it as opposed to like the, at the different seats. But we had, some people have transitioned to using Google Meet as well. So between the two, like there are some different feature sets, you know, that some people prefer Zoom. So we don't have as many licenses as we used to. We really cut it back, but there are, we can maintain some.
So we're not budget, I should have just asked a more direct question, but we're not budgeting for every student to have a Zoom license, right?
No.
Okay.
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, sorry.
Probably would fall under this is safety of student information and data. And I know that last year there was an issue with Power School, not our system, but Power School's system. But are we positioned well in terms of preserving our, you know, specific student data and personally identifiable information and?
We are. So we, you know, we make the best effort that we can to protect our information. We work very closely with the town. So the town, the municipal IT department does take the lead on some of our cybersecurity initiatives. But we have implemented certain cybersecurity, you know, processes or software, you know, such as, you know, obviously antivirus, but also EDR and, you know, looking at, looking at what the computers are doing, how they are doing it to try to, you know, detect any anomalies, things like that. So we have, we have everything, we have that on our servers, also all of our mobile devices. And we're working on covering, you know, trying to cover all of our computers over the next couple of years as well. So we partner with the town on that. Fortunately, they do cover the majority of the cost of that, but we do share those services with them.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. And the final slide here, this is capital request. So the items that are on this slide are not reflected in the school operating budget. This is a capital request that we put in annually in conjunction with the municipal IT department and the library department as well. So between the three, between the three groups, we put together a warrant article for technology throughout the town of De'Embers. So what we've been using our portion for, for the past few years is to improve and upgrade the classroom technology across our schools. So what that primarily has included is replacing non-functioning or broken smart boards or interactive projectors throughout the district, replacing those with clear touch interactive displays and as well as retiring some of the older desktop computers that teachers have been using and replacing those with a laptop or mobile device for the teacher to use, which gives them some more flexibility in terms of their work as well. So we've been doing, we've been doing this, you know, at all three levels to try and, you know, upgrade, you know, everybody sort of more uniformly. Over the past few years, at the elementary level, we've done grades five all the way down to first grade, so we're hoping to do kindergarten next year. At the middle school, we've been working on upgrading the classrooms by floor and the same with the high school as well. So we're looking to continue those upgrades to make sure that, you know, our teachers and our students have access to the latest and greatest in the classrooms and we're supporting, supporting them with training and professional development as much as we can. One of the other things that we're looking to upgrade at high school as well is the digital arts and media lab. Right now, that's one of the oldest labs that we have in the district and the Mac desktops there are about 13 years old. So they've, they've served us well, but it's time to upgrade them so that we can make sure that we provide the students and the teachers with the latest graphic design software for their, for their classes as well. So that's our, that's our goal with the capital funding this year. One of the other initiatives townwide is to also upgrade the phone systems. So right now, the town has their own phone system, the schools have their own phone system. Both are aging and reaching the end of life, so we're going to collaborate together to go to one phone system townwide, which will, which will give us the, you know, the opportunity in the coming years to have some efficiency and cost savings once we can get things up and running. That's being funded through the town and also through the capital town meeting warrants, which we'll see in town. And that's what I've got. Any questions? Any other questions?
No questions. Great. Thank you so much. Jim does a great job. In fact, the upgrades in the MPR happened this summer, the warrant, right? Microphones, the projection unit. And I think adding that, I think the one piece when we talk about reallocation and moving things around was upgrading that position for the administrative assistant because the data is critical. So as accurate as it is, it has to be 100% accurate when it goes to state because funding relies upon that. But also our administrators, they're stretched as well as our admin assistants. So this position is designed to help that with scheduling and any other data needs. So that was a good move. A lot of collaboration through the middle school with their admin assistants to make that work. So I think it's going to help us in the long run.
Thank you for that.
Next up is transportation. So our Director of Transportation Operations, David Pulsifer, whom I believe you met last
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay. My name is David Pulsifer. I'm the Transportation and Operations Coordinator and I'm going to review the transportation budget for FY '26. First slide here is just a little district information. You know, we have four vans running currently, providing in-district special education transportation. We have four buses we run on the town. We have a couple spare vehicles on the vans and one spare bus. And we have our contract with Salter Transportation for 10 buses. You can see our students, you know, we have a significant amount of special education and then 1,200 students on the big bus. That's about a third of the students that attend De'Ember High School. Pointing on the first slide here, the yellow bus contract is up this year. We have one more year and, you know, like anything else, there's increase of about And I expect to have some competition in the next bidding, which would help hopefully keep the prices lower in district and looking at maybe changing the number from, you know, 10 buses on the contract to, you know, nine and running five in town to kind of even lower You can see here that the special education has increased astronomically, but just to point out, from 2023 to 2025, it's up over a million dollars. So, you know, I've put a lot of eyes on different things that are causing that and it's really just, you know, more oversight on how we're bidding out the routes and what we can do differently, like Dan mentioned with the consortium, putting together something, you know, cost sharing with other districts possibly. So there are, there are some ways to curb that cost and we'll talk about that more if we go through the presentation next slide. So some of the strategies, I'm hoping that at a minimum, I think 10% is very reasonable to hit. I'm hoping to hit more because that just puts more into the school to provide, you know, other services that Dan mentioned are important to the education as well. So, you know, adding a couple of district vans just to start, you know, I'm not looking to build a fleet of 20, but I think we can, you know, chip away at it a little at a time. Reviewing the routes that we currently have, trying to identify a better consolidation of in-district and out-of-district. I think there's a possibility by contracting with van, with vendors for a better price that we could kind of lock it in to control the increases and maybe get some decrease, maybe giving a company some more business and reassurance that, hey, like, you know, let's say we're running, you know, 50 routes with contractors now, it's possible that if we gave somebody 20 routes at a certain price, we could offset some costs.
And if I can interject here, if that's okay. One of the big things that's important is that the town has worked well with us because there is a fleet of vans that are available as they look through and see what we can utilize. For example, we had two vans added to our fleet last year that were extra correctional transportation, athletics, huge savings. And they found two vans that are in good shape that we can add, bring to the route. So there's been really good collaboration with the DPW and David's done a nice job of closing that loop.
Yes, he has, Dan. Thank you. Just slide, just more for a visual purpose, like in out-of-district transportation versus our driver, using one of our drivers versus hiring outside is, you know, 20,000 per student. And I mentioned, you know, bringing in-district vans, but it is possible that we can try to do some out-of-district stuff. But the bottom line is that the savings are there, the more we can use our own transportation Just some, some things, you know, we've added the position in the district here. It's been great to be here. I'm glad to assist in helping provide the transportation. There's no extra cost for the van drivers, they're already in our budget. We're just not, we're just not utilizing that. And I'm proposing to add money for a spare bus driver. Athletics, when we have to contract out, same thing, they cost us double the money. And I feel like if we can get, you know, we have four drivers now, for example, that are doing transportation, but only two of them assist with athletics. So they have to send out half of the runs to another company. And so have another driver should, will pay for itself there, plus shave off some on the athletic side too. And Dan did mention that the two vans, I talked to the athletic director and they do utilize them. They also get utilized for field trips and things like that, which, you know, don't come out of the school budget, but they do help the cost to the community on the, on the teachers' end and students. And this just overall, I mean, you know, having a better oversight and baseline on transportation, like I said earlier, will reduce, reduce the costs and, you know, some of the strategies, it's just kind of a phase. And I'm, right now I'm in the process of looking at phase one, going into phase two, just kind of more data. You know, we did, like I said, we did a survey earlier just to kind of collect feedback from the families on how we were doing the transportation, how are we holding our vendors accountable, you know, kind of giving them a performance review. Like they were paying a lot of money, like are we getting the service we need? And working with the central office, there's a lot of different staff that, that bringing the, the information from setting up the student to the billing, to the reporting. So just kind of centralizing that within the central office group. And I think by doing all these things, you know, we can see significant savings. The budget for 2025 is 2.8 million and so 10% is going to be 250,000 right off the budget. But like I said, that's not guaranteed, right? But it's, it's there if we look at it, I think so. Is there any questions?
Do you think it's going to be a heavy lift to find a couple more drivers, hire, you know, two to four more drivers?
No, I do not. I, I put it out, actually I, I put an ad out two weeks ago and I've already got one higher, which is starting in a couple of weeks. And I have a couple of the applicants that showed interest. So I was, I felt good to have that and, you know, when you put it out there, you're going to see what you can get. So I think that's a small, two to four is definitely realistic based on what I've seen.
Thank you.
So thanks for this. I like some of the creativity in this. I think it's, you know, really heading in the right direction. One of the, since I've joined the school committee, it's always the out-of-district transportation that continues to go up and it's hard to predict and we don't know how many families are going to move in, how many, what's going to require that. And I guess this might not even be a question for you, maybe it's a question for, for us, but do we take a bold stance and just put a little bit of a padding on, on that? Just understanding that there's no way that we're ever going to, I figure whatever number that we throw in there is kind of almost arbitrary, right? It's hard for us to predict that, but for, from a percentage increase standpoint, does it make sense to pad that a little bit?
That has been our typical approach in, over the last few years. And really the, the increases have outpaced our ability to just, just budget based on normal sort of market expectations of 3%, 5% and so forth. I think that the investment in a transportation coordinator and the ability of someone with a lot of knowledge and expertise about the industry, his ability to leverage that to realize some savings and start to turn it around. I have a lot of hope, I think we as a district have, as a district leadership, have a lot of hope that that is going to, is going to be effective. If, if it goes up by 3%, I think we'll still be okay. What we don't want it to do is go up by another $400,000 next year. And so, so I think investing in the right people to be doing the job is, is an important step in the right direction for this.
Yeah. I was just going to echo everything that Pam said and kudos to you. And I know very early on, one of the first things that Mr. Bauer brought to my attention was we had a transportation program within the school that there was almost no oversight. It was, you know, whatever rate or whatever bid we got, that's what we paid and that was it. So I just kind of want to acknowledge your foresight in bringing him on so we can have some visibility. And so far, fingers crossed, I mean, it's almost a self-funded position, you know, that's come on board. So hopefully we're getting savings on both ends. So I'm just as hopeful as Pam and the whole district that we can save some money here. But again, I mean, kudos to, you know, to Mr. Bauer for bringing this on and having someone just focused on this because I think we're already seeing some savings. But two more. No. Thank you, Chair, for saying that. I can't take all the credit. Our administrative assistants, as I said, they're stretched thin and they were overseeing, you know, the transportation and collaboration with former principal Adam Federico too. It was a lot. So it's huge because now we can say, take care of it, come up with creative ideas. Something that's worth noting though, Josh's point, is that the collaboration in the town is key because on a warrant article, we have transportation built in every year for about $150,000. This year going forward, we feel if we add, take, purchase a bus with that that goes through town meeting, then if we add one more bus to the fleet, then that would then allow us within our contract to reduce one bus that we rent out from Salter. And that's, that savings itself almost offsets inflationary increase. Not quite, but it's, it's close. And even talking today where if we're able to take one of the two vans, use the bus driver, consolidate our in-district special education transportation, for example, those that may need to go to Smith or those that may come to Holton Richmond, it was an incredible amount of money that would be saved as opposed to, you know, putting that out, the bid. So to your point, that's the goal and we're optimistic, you know, but cautious because things, you know, can shift. But we're really hoping that the regionalization gains traction. And I, and we bring the final budget numbers at the end, you'll see that we can't count on these savings yet, like we can't build it in. But projecting out, you know, that will give us some relief too, knowing that moving forward, I think, and we've taken the lead from the school committee, how can we flatten the curve? You know, costs are going to go up. How can we flatten the curve? So kudos to David, kudos to our admin and the admin assistants because they were the ones that really worked hard and said we need some oversight here.
Thank you. Yes.
So first of all, I love what I hear in terms of the focus you're bringing to finding efficiencies, finding ways to save money. And when you talk about the, that jump from fiscal '23 to fiscal '25 projected, you talked about sort of lack of oversight. And was it simply that we weren't, we, no one was charged with and/or naturally sort of looking for those efficiencies?
Yeah. Yeah, I think like Dan said, the town, the staff that was working on transportation, they, I worked with them when I was at Salter. They, they did what, you know, they, they were, what they knew, right? And I think the bottom line is you have to get the kids to school. When I, one of the things I first looked at when I saw the list, I'm like, When I, one of the things I first looked at when I saw the list, I'm like, okay, like, how do they, how do they do it? And just really just putting stuff out to bid. And I think that's a good way to get a low cost. But I think what was missed, the fundamental piece that was missed, is that there's a, you know, there's a element, there's a, there's a high school run that, that should be X amount of money, and there's an elementary run that should be X amount of money. And simply put, those two routes together, I feel should be one cost, right? Whereas you're almost paying the same cost for, for elementary and high school. So when you put them together or separate them, you're paying almost that. And I think that's why you see that million-dollar increase or $400,000 plus, because you're almost somehow like doubling it, just kind of looking at different ways to do it. And how do you put it out? You know, that's why I was looking at contracts and different things, and I've talked to some other vendors. And there's a lot of opportunity. I mean, this is America, right? People, people want more opportunity, right? The district gets a lot of phone calls for, for transportation, right? But you also have to look at, you know, their reputation, right? So there are a lot of good companies out there that we've been, used to our advantage to help keep the cost down.
And just a point of clarification I could share to Mr. Crane. There was oversight in terms of making sure that students had transportation.
Oh, sure.
Collaborating, but I think what David's providing is that deeper level. Being able to, because he has the time and the industry knowledge to dig in deep and find, like, how can we maximize?
That's what I mean, that's kind of my assumption. There were efficiencies out there.
Yes.
Not that the, the internal oversight was like, you know, bad bus routes, kids. No, what I'm talking about is someone, like, say, with the knowledge to go in and find, you know, efficiencies. And maybe it's partly re, I don't want to say recalculate, redrawing routes in a way that is a little more efficient, even if it saves a few bus runs. That's a few dollars here. If it's something else in terms of how you use your drivers or your buses that we own, that's a few more dollars. And before long, it adds up, right? So I think that's what it means. That's why I wanted to clarify what you meant about oversight.
Yeah, it's, it's a baby step process, where you just, little at a time, chip away at it. It's not, you know, we're not, we're not a transportation company, right? Like, but, but we can, we can look at the, those small things and, and do our best to reduce the cost.
No, that's. I appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you. Glad to have a pot, have an opportunity to do this with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. We're moving on now to our school-based presentation. So if our elementary team can come up and they'll do the presentation. I think they've rehearsed this presentation, so we'll see how this goes.
Good evening, everyone. This is fun. Give me a mic. Wow. Good evening. As an elementary team, our priority is to support our students both academically and socially, emotionally. In order for the needs of all of our students, we are asking increases in the ELA math and social studies supply lines. In addition, we are committed to the continual support of our special education programming. The additional support we need in this area will be included in the special education budget. Oh, hold on. So in terms of non-salaried requests, you'll see an increase overall in our ELA budget. And this is due to two components. The first is we currently use an early literacy screener and progress monitoring tool, K to five. Previously, K to three, the K to three portion of that tool was funded by a grant. Last year, we paid for four and five out of the budget. This upcoming year, we would need to pay for K to five out of the budget. So that is to be able to continue to utilize our literacy screener across grades K to five across the five schools. The new item that is listed up there is that our phonics curriculum that runs K to five came out with decodable texts that are aligned to each grade level. Ideally, we would love to be able to purchase this across K to five. But knowing that we needed to be strategic about where we're spending our money, our proposal is to move forward with providing those texts for grades one and two across the district. That's a cost of $1,000 per classroom across the five schools. And if we're able to fund this, we would love to, as, looking towards next year, we'd love to head into kindergarten and third grade and start filling out the rest of the grades. But we're making, based on data, we're making a strategic decision to start in grades one and two. In terms of math, you'll see an increase as well. That is not due to anything new. That is due to the cost of the workbooks, the student workbooks, going from $35 per student to $38 per student. In addition, I've also learned throughout the years to, originally, I would budget 24 kids here, 21 kids here. This year, and that always leaves me, the numbers that we have now are not what they are in August or September. And so this year, I just did 25 per classroom. So the combination of the increase in the workbooks and enrollment, the variability in the enrollment leads to an overall increase as well. The third item is the continuation of a social studies curriculum that we began in K2 this year. Again, previously grant-funded, and we would love to be able to continue to utilize the curriculum. We were able to, with the grant, purchase all of the books that go along with this curriculum. So all the one-time costs are already covered. This is the digital access for the teachers to the curriculum. So that is the increase at the elementary level in terms of the non-salaried requests.
Can I ask a quick question here? In, in regards to item one, literacy instruction, which is something I, I'm sure.
Which is important to us.
Yeah, which is incredibly important to everyone.
Yes.
What is the difference in cost for the entire K through five package versus just grades one and two?
It's $1,000 per classroom. So for example, at Riverside, where there's two first grades and two second grades, that's a total of $4,000. In Highlands, that's three grade levels at first grade and three classes at second grade. So now you're at $6,000. So at a school like Riverside, where there are six classes per grade level, I'm sorry, two classes per grade level, so 12 class, so it'd be $12,000 for Riverside to have those decodable texts in each classroom. And what these texts are, so we have a phonics curriculum, which we are now in our third year of utilizing, our second year, excuse me, our second year of utilizing. They've come out with texts that match the skills that you're teaching. So when you're in lesson 2.1 and you're teaching short vowels, you then have a class set of texts that students can decode based on the scope and sequence, based on everything you've taught till then, you can decode it. Some of the fascinating ones are actually up in the upper grades and having books. It's a challenge to write texts that you've taught everything you can decode, but they're still interesting to third, fourth, and fifth graders. So we do think it would be a great investment. We also, just starting with one and two, also allows us to try it out, get it going, and see if this is something we would want to continue with. Does that make sense? And those are the two grade levels where they are learning the most amount of phonics skills in a very short amount of time. So we felt like those were the two grades to invest in.
Can I ask a follow-up? Because knowing that in elementary school, the kids are not switching classrooms, is it possible to have, like, it's a pose, yeah, share?
Possible, not ideal, because our schedules stay. So if Brian and I are teaching fourth grade together, our ELA blocks at the same time, our math block is at the same time, our preps at the same time, so that we're staying in line. So we would need the texts at the same time. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
But it would be, but it would be interesting.
I'm not an educator, but I'm wondering if there's any thought of staggering.
Yep, no, absolutely. And it is something that, even if we bought one third-grade set or one fourth-grade set, and we're able to utilize it either during our MTSS block or the reading teachers were utilizing it. So it is an avenue that we do want to, you know, when we first began this work, we invested a lot of money in decodable texts at the beginning. We're now at the point where we're like, we, we still need more in the younger grades. Well, students are really figuring out the decoding part. And so when our curriculum came out with these, like, that makes sense for us to invest in this direction so that they're exactly aligned to what we're teaching.
And I'll just say this to the committee as a whole, because I think we've seen from the test results, the upward spike and where our students were progressing. And I, I know we're looking at potential level set budget and, and all these other things, but these are the areas where I get really concerned, where, you know, looking at the budget in its entirety, like, where, from, what's the phrase I'm looking for? Mostable sounds bad, but that's the word, right? You can help me with that. But you've, you've shown clear examples of benefits from the decodable text, and we've seen the progress, and we've seen momentum. And we really have to think about the impact of stopping this momentum as opposed to potential investments in places where maybe we're not seeing evidence of progress. And I'm just putting that out for everyone to, to consider. And you just shared with me, and I apologize if my math is off, but is it a total of, is it another, like, 50%? Looking at it, another 22,000?
Essentially, yeah, if you look at it as one and two, it's a third, right? One and two is a, there are six grade levels, that's two. So it's, you would need another two-thirds. But I think there's strategic.
My math was wrong, then.
So there's six grade levels, we're accounting for two of them, which would be a third of the classes. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah.
And what was, and that was the cost in prior years?
It's $1,000 per classroom.
No, but in, in regards to the total investment in prior years. Now, you're asking for a third of what you historically got to fund this, okay.
It's the only new item in the non-salaried requests. And I think it's an area that, if we had to put our money anywhere in non-salaried requests, I think we would agree continuing to invest in our early childhood, our early K1 and 2, those that prime, those primary classrooms are incredibly important and the work that's happening down there. If we can, we recently, at our professional development in January, we had an outside speaker come, and she showed us some graphs that if we are able to make sure, if kids are on grade level at the end of first grade, they are then on track for the rest of their trajectory. So the more resources and support, I'm also talking to myself, but the more we can do collectively to support what's happening in K and one will benefit us for years to come. And we'll see that as they move through the grade levels.
And for me, I mean, again, I opened with how, one incredibly important this is, because being able to decode text, read helps you across.
Everything.
Across everything. And that's just something that I think we have to, from the overall budget as a percentage, because this is something, when it comes to especially people in the town and taxpayers, the criticisms are always around, how are we performing as a district? And I think that's where, where particularly more engaged in, what are we doing? What are we doing? And I don't want to be sitting here, you know, allowing us to cut something that has a direct impact on that momentum. So, I mean, I'll open it up for anyone else, but this is critically important. And also in the presentations, this is where I know, you know, you're coming in and you're doing what kind of the town is asking, but this is also an area where I, I think it's important to talk about, this is our trajectory, this is where things are going, this is what we spent. But this is, I just think, I, 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 it doesn't feel good to me. So that, I'm just going to share that openly, and I'll open it up for anyone else. But that, this is a really, really critical place that we have to take a really, really hard look at. And if there's anything else in the budget where we're projecting and having progress and making an impact, we have to look at other areas where can we afford to wait for something else if it comes down to like a real big budget crunch? And I'll finally just pass it on.
So there are no, looking at the salaried requests, there are no new positions that you're looking for, correct?
So I can talk to that. So we're not asking for any additional salaried requests from just simply an elementary level. What we are asking for is maintaining those level services. The additional funds that you allocated to us last year were hugely important in providing us with an opportunity to create more safe and supportive schools for all of our students. These, as Ms. Powers said at the beginning, we are asking for additional support, but that really falls under our student services. So we're going to let our colleagues in student services talk about that. But we are all here to say what they're asking for later is seconded by us. We need those positions, but most importantly, everything we added this year, we can't lose. So that level funded, level service budget is hugely important for us to continue the work that we're doing, not just the materials, but the positions that we added not only created additional support in classrooms and across the school day, but allowed us to implement the curriculum more effectively for all students.
So effectively, for all that you, you guys do, we have five elementary schools. The entire increase that you're looking for is just over $49,000. You're looking for a budget increase for the five schools of less than $10,000 a school. Well, I don't know anybody who could argue with that from a, if you're looking to save money. But I do sort of share your concern, Gabe, that maybe it's too little. And if there's a way to, to, you know, get the decodable texts that you think you need in the upper grades, or even just a couple more of the, you know, maybe you go one to four. You can't go all the way to six this year. But I guess my point is, or five rather, but my point is that, boy, you, you are being very responsible, maybe almost too responsible on what you're looking for.
I think it's important to, like, from a, yeah, we're trying to be as responsible as possible. But from a student services perspective, that helps support all of our students and all of us as administrators, we are going to ask for more. So while it looks like we're asking for only, you know, $10,000 per school, there will be additional funds that we're asking for.
So some of what you're looking for will be built into the student services budget. I get it, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, no, and, and I commend you guys on, on being fiscally responsible for this. But again, like, we've had this discussion in the sub, budget subcommittee. We want everybody to be, we, we want to ask for the right amount of money, but we don't want to also put ourselves at a disadvantage, you know, within the, you guys to operate the schools, because we don't operate the schools, right? We, you guys are in the trenches doing it. So I would, I would put that on the side, I'd make a little note in my margin and see, like, as we go through and we see all the rest of this, I could, I could definitely see, because to Gabe's point, it was proven, right? We're starting to see that the trajectory is starting to go up. So I, I would, I would support putting that in the margin note. Good job, thank you. Let's see if we can revisit this.
Glad to hear that. It's important at all levels, literacy, but to hit those, get them earlier. I agree with what the research, I've always felt that way. But I'm going to take this in a different direction. I see ELA addressed, I see math addressed. I actually see social studies addressed, which I'm very happy about. But I'm surprised that Mr. Obrowski didn't tell you that we were on the same teaching team. He taught social studies and I taught science. And I don't see science on here. That's my baby, that's my pet project.
Science is level-funded. We have money to pay for the curriculum, for the digital licenses, for the student licenses in grades three to five, and to purchase the science supplies that we need. So the reason it's not on the table is because there's not an increase associated with it. But we are teaching science, and we do have money to teach science.
I knew you were teaching science, but I really appreciate what your response was. And you can blame him for that question. Thank you.
I, I just want to piggyback what was being said before. I, I know, having worked in the schools where I work in as well, formerly in Danvers, that it's, these types of things are very important for the students. And I understand that first and second grade is definitely where they learn, pick up the most language, both decodable as well as conversationally. But I agree that, you know, if, if it's there, like, third and fourth grade, even, even if we're not comfortable with all the way to K to five, it, it, just extend that. You know, like, the, the, why put the speed bump there after two if it's not going to be filled in later or possibly not filled in later? So if it's there, I, I don't see why, this is like, it's like building a house without putting down a foundation. You know, you can't do anything without being able to decode text, so. I'm just gonna piggyback what they said, and I think that if, like Josh said, it's in my margin. It has a big star next to it, because I feel like this is probably the most important thing right now.
And I understand that piece, and the team's done a great job prioritizing, and Julie made a really good point to Mr. Shannon, the fact of that, you know, these are increases, you know, we're level service, so we still have the great things that we have. And I can't agree with you more. Like, bang for the buck, right? Student achievement, we're taught, we're seeing some great gains, working tremendously hard at the elementary level and all of our levels. But really, and I appreciate that support for that critical literacy, that's the key. So, you know, those are increases, you know, we still have built in the budget the amount to get us through the other materials. And I have to commend that team because we started here, we're here, but we know it has to be sustainable, but we don't want to shortchange. And respect that, and we'll make that in the notations, you know, the materials that are needed so we can keep the progress going. Absolutely.
I know we have to be strategic when we bring this forward, and so I can appreciate that. Some of the conversation tonight has been around areas where we could realize savings. So I ask, I put it out there that, is there a potential later on, when we hit those savings, that we could step back and say, now is the time we can go and get that to the other grades?
So the answer, the short answer is yes, at some point as we massage this through. There are some other areas that we see some potential savings, you know, but as we move forward and make sure the allocations are there, anything we save, we're able to use within, which is tremendous. So I, so that's a piece too. And also, Pam's credit, you know, whenever something comes aboard where we're like, we need this or that mid-year, because that always happens, we always manage to find that, or if there's a grant, or something necessary. Because we can't shortchange this at all. But with the savings, and that's the whole idea, to be strategic, is we can realize the savings, can we apply it to other areas? Absolutely, absolutely. And that's a great point.
Now that's it. No. Thank you. And we're gonna really take a hard look at this, so thank you. Mary has a little update for me. Go ahead, Mary.
She found the money.
Well, just the entitlement, the entitlement grant, so we have a Title I grant. Sorry, we have a Title I grant that we, allows us for elementary literacy and math. And so we could look at the funds to come through this summer and try to budget for the extra materials there.
Okay, next up, we have our middle school team. Principal Colin Tony and Curriculum Director Ellen Fierich are coming aboard. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Here at the Holt and Richmond team, me and Ms. Fierich. This first slide I love, because we only do this really once, maybe twice a year. We get the whole school together, so that's the first day of school. All the Holt Richmond Hawks, and we clap in our sixth graders and welcome, hopefully don't scare them, to the middle school on their first day. But we're really proud of the work we're doing at our school. Next slide. So I just want to piggyback on what the elementary school said. We really appreciate the support we've had from the school committees, Superintendent Bauer. Support really our priorities the last two years, last year leading to this year. Our work is never done in this area of being a safe and supportive school, especially at the middle school level. There's always work to do there, but really proud of the hard work our students and staff are doing. Last week, we met with our staff to assess the mid-year data around our chronic absenteeism, our bully referral, our administrative referrals to the opportunity room. And we're really trending in the right direction in all those areas. Our chronic absenteeism's down five percent from last year. Our students want to be here. Our bullying referrals are down tremendously. Again, always work to do there, but really proud of the direction we're going there. As we looked at this year's budget, really looking to, you know, maintain the focus on providing a safe environment for our students, but really taking a close look at our curriculum, looking at the teaching and learning needs across the building, and really try to build up our tier-two intervention moving forward. So for salary requests, really, two positions. One is the reading interventionist. I think all the work you heard from Julie talk about the literacy progress we're making, we'd love to see a reading interventionist. Is that better? All right. Also working with a little chest cold, so. Yeah, a little raspy. So one of our biggest needs is a reading interventionist. And to really parallel our math intervention this year, we have a math interventionist that we moved over from Esther Funding. She's done tremendous work pushing into the classroom, supporting the needs of all students. We would love to see a reading interventionist do the same work, particularly help bridge that fifth or sixth grade and kind of learn more about, you know, the work that's happening at the elementary level to support that transition to the middle school. So we're looking at creative ways to maybe find out how to reallocate that. That is really one of our top priorities. And what you'll see in the student services presentation as well, really the need for a building-based team chair here at the middle school to help support the transition of all our students, particularly our programming at the middle school level, as our students are all coming together from the five buildings. And so that's, you know, kind of a need you'll hear from our student support team.
Good evening. As far as non-salaried requests, the increases here really do represent a level, consistent level of service from previous years. It's just that the, some of our funding sources have changed. So for example, one of the grants that Mary explained earlier was a grant that funded our math curriculum for the last several years. That grant has come to a close, or will be coming to a close. So to continue our current math program, those, those costs of the digital licenses and workbooks for students, the per-student cost, that's going to have to go onto the operating budget. So you'll see the increase there. I believe this might be a revision from what you have in front of you with your slide deck, but in terms of world language curriculum, we are hoping to purchase some resources to align with what's currently used at the high school level, some materials to provide authentic resources in language instruction. So you'll see an increase there. And then finally, just sort of cost, cost increases in some of the products that we use regularly, some of the digital subscriptions that are used across all content areas.
That's a good question on subscriptions.
Yes.
It's pretty fundamental. I think Josh asked something earlier to our technology. Do we track, like, usage and engagement? And these are, like, not just automatic, but like, yeah?
Yes, that's something that I look at every year when we start the budget process. Look at how widely used these programs are. Obviously, there's nothing that's used, you know, by every teacher, but certainly, you know, there are, there's a good amount of usage of each of these that we are choosing to renew. Yep, thanks for asking.
Super short. Not short in a bad way, but, I mean, and I'm not sure of how many of you watched our budget workshop, but we were really cognizant of, like, the level of investment and the big ask from the town last year. And I think it's good to just say in general that, you know, as a school committee, we, we're in a scenario where, you know, other districts are cutting. You know, there's cuts, and there's, you know, there's salary negotiations and contracts coming up, and we just went through a contract. We avoided the strike, which has been great. We're so grateful for that. But at the same time, it's like, just looking at all of our costs. But at the same time, as we go through this, and maybe it's another component, and maybe we have to sit and have a conversation and review, like, what programs are really having an impact? And we really, I don't want to be the committee that puts an ax or halts progress, you know? And it may be a matter of maybe not increasing the ask, but looking at, you know, from a priority perspective, where can we just put our foot on the gas on things that are really having an impact on the students? And pausing or just reviewing what isn't? And I think that's gonna be the main focus, and I think we're all on the same page for that. I don't think it's a matter of, hey, we want to ask for more money because we don't, because we want to, because we want to be cognizant of the current fiscal condition. But it's really a matter of, if there are items that we folks feel are, you know, hey, we're making progress here, or we're still struggling there, I think now more than ever would be a moment to, you know, I know it's not in the deck, like, say it. You know, to Eric's point or Josh's point, we'll put it in the margins and just have a look.
Yeah, and I think that salary request is really the one that's on there for the reading interventionists. I would emphasize that, a big ask for us in terms of just, again, one thing we want to do is better bridge the transition from five to six, so that when they finish fifth grade, if we're not starting over again in the sixth grade, you know, with our students coming in from different, all the five schools. So really building our own kind of curriculum team with Ellen, with Mathemant Dimensionist, Reading Interventionist, that can really bridge that transition, and also to the high schools as well. This year, we've got a lot of positive feedback from our math department that our math intervention is pushing into classes, helping all learners. It's not a standalone class for students that are struggling, that get missed out on something else. And that's really that push-in inclusion model that we'd like to see for literacy too. So I think that's one of our most highest leverage positions. Then again, you'll see in the student support presentation, get, size enough having a building-based team chair to really, particularly at the middle school, where there are so many developmental needs for all our students, particularly our high-needs students, to really carefully case-manage that transition, then help us understand our students as they come to our school. And again, be that bridge between elementary and high school. So we try to be really responsible too, obviously with our budget presentation, and talking to Superintendent Bauer. Our two most pressing areas are some literacy intervention help and a building-based team chair.
The reallocation for the reading interventionist, which allows you to have a net total cost of zero, what are we, where's that reallocation coming from? Meaning, is there something that, a full-time equivalent, some job that someone was performing, some, you know, as a service? But where did we, where did we decide, no, we don't need this, but we do need a reading interventionist?
Yeah, I don't think-
If that makes sense.
Yeah, I don't think we're at that level of detail. I think we really just, that was kind of the path we're hoping to find in really drilling down into, you know, the services our students currently have and the staffing that we have. Is there any way to kind of move people within the, in the building to provide that level of service?
Okay.
So we haven't identified a certain person, per se.
Got it, but a full-time equivalent.
Yeah.
You're gonna make that up from here and there, so to speak.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I was just going to add, as far as the non-salaried requests, we are fortunate in that we are adopting two new curricula for next year. We're adopting a new English and new science curriculum program, one of which is, happens to be an open-source curriculum, which means there's very little cost associated besides materials and professional learning. And the other is a nonprofit, it's run by a nonprofit, so significant cost savings. And we're really fortunate, these are the programs we wanted to implement, but the fact that frankly, they're less expensive than a kind of traditional for-profit publisher is definitely working in our favor here. Yes, yes, what the ELA curriculum's fish tank, which is currently being implemented in elementary.
Well, thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna move to the high school now. We have Principal DeMaro here to present the high school budget request for next year. High school is gone though.
Oh, wow, so by himself. Good evening, everyone, how are you? So I'm pleased here to present our budget proposal for Danvers High School for fiscal year 2026. Our hope for next year is to continue to offer the innovative programming we have at the high school. Over the course of the past several years, we've continued to build up different, unique opportunities for students, including our AP course repertoire, our early college program, our college and career pathways. And we continue to hope to offer this advanced coursework along with specific interventions and specialized programs for students that need support. So the theme of ours is just maintaining current staffing, maintaining current programming and level service, so that we can use the staffing and resources we currently have to support our students both academically, with their mental health and behavior, and really continue to create exciting courses for students to have the opportunity to participate in. So with that being said, before we get to the specific non-salaried and salaried requests, I'd just like to set the context, since there aren't too many asks based on what we're working with. I know something that we're always thinking about is enrollment. So just wanted to report that grade eight applications to other high schools is consistent with last year. And then, an encouraging piece of data actually is, over this past summer, we had the highest number of students originally commit to another school and then return to Danvers High School. So that was about, almost five percent of students that did that. So we're very pleased to see that. Just the different opportunities students can participate in that our staff support are specialized advanced coursework such as AP, Project Lead the Way, and DECA, which we get credit from the state for, for students participating in that advanced level of coursework. Different career-based learning and training, such as our college and career pathways, which we're hoping to expand through grant funding, and eventually offer industry-recognized credentials for students to participate in that. As I said, our early college program, support for SCL and mental health needs, support for our diversifying population such as ESL and special ed, and as always, a safe and positive learning environment. So our current staffing levels help to do all these things, as well as hopefully retain students in the district. Our current staffing allows for the following. I wanted to specifically point out these different data points. We currently offer 21 advanced placement courses this year. As was presented at the January meeting, we're actually offering one more. So we'll have 22 for next year, which is wonderful. As Mary said earlier, we have grant funds to support health and social services and environmental science pathways. As I said, students will be able to hopefully earn industry-recognized credentials. The one specific example I can give is through some of the capital we'll be able to gain, we could potentially implement a CNA program where students will leave with that credential after graduating from high school, which is really exciting. And then our early college program, we're currently in our third year, so we have three full cohorts of students from sophomores to seniors going through, they end up graduating with five college classes under the belt, which is a huge advantage to them as they continue in their post-secondary plans. And the last thing I wanted to review is some of the specialized instruction and program that we've been able to utilize with our staff. So something we're piloting this spring is tier-two intervention courses. So this provides targeted specialized instruction for any student that needs additional support. It offers a block of academic intervention if students need help with executive functioning skills, organization, time management, for some students that may be all they need. We're also piloting intervention courses within four of the core subject areas, math, science, social studies, and ELA. Our hope is to pilot it this spring with a cohort of teachers, see how it goes, and then offer it to a fuller extent this fall to see if we're able to track student data and make gains both in their academic performance and attendance. Other programs that have been in existence are the DRIVE program, our TLC program, and our credit recovery. I know in the technology presentation, it referenced the Apex distant learning seats. That's used mostly in the credit recovery program to help our upperclassman students make up credits due to the loss of learning. And so when it comes to non-salaried requests, it's truly a level service budget for the 25, 26 school year. We have many, many account lines at the high school. Fortunately, from one year to the next, we're able to strategically reallocate funds to support what we need to get from one year to the next. So this increase of five thousand and three dollars is just increases in the cost of what we currently have in place. So the renewal of certain AP textbooks, which have to be renewed every so often, and the renewal of assessment tools that we use to track student progress in ELA and math. And then we do not have any, we're not seeking to add any salaried requests for next year as well. But like I said, even though these last two slides, there's not much. What we currently have, we're fortunate enough to maintain that. We're able to strategically use the staffing that we have, the resources we have, to support students fully.
No questions?
Oh. Our early college program, do we pay for the transportation? Do we transport over?
So we do have some grant funds that help pay for that, but it's sort of a combination of both.
How do you question an increase of $5,003? What line item should we get now? It really feels like, and I know you're glad that you're getting the level funding essentially. You'll keep doing what you're doing, but I worry about the moving forward part. This is not, you know, you're being extraordinarily responsible, we're working with the town, you know, I get that. But again, that's another one for the margin, Josh, right?
Yeah, wow. I do feel like we're very well-funded at the high school. And the first thing we always look at is how can we reallocate what we have to sort of meet our needs? We look at different departments at different years, see can we prioritize one department one year over the next? And for the most part, we're typically able to do that from year to year, which fortunately usually works out.
So let's have some straight talk. You had a list, Dan told you to get rid of the stuff. So what was on that list that you want to put back on there?
I didn't have a list.
Huh?
I had asked. And I have no questions, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
If I could just have one follow-up, I think the key is, you know, my second year here and I saw last year the, and that's a fair question actually, and then Peter did a good job answering that, so thank you, Peter. But really looking for, you know, as you try to look down the road strategically, so it's not just the one-offs. And obviously looking for ways to maximize, and some of the grant money has helped us, you know, add the applied learning, the pathways, and those help offset a lot of the costs. So, you know, we're grateful for the funding, but I think Peter and his team has done a nice job really, like how can we look at our resources and move them to support kids in different ways? You know, because although the enrollment, which gets the other piece too, is that, you know, and Mike Lander will be here on the 10th to talk about Essex Tech. And we're not competing with Essex Tech per se, they do things differently than we do. But we offer things that, you know, and to be more creative, to keep kids here, you know, with the AP classes, which are wonderful performing arts and everything in between. So we have those and we have to keep to be competitive. And we keep adding to that with the pathways and with the 1-8 Foundation, the applied learning. So it's important, but they're doing a nice job being strategic. So I think now we're going to our last presentation, which is student services.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm pleased to have with us tonight Derek Munyon, our assistant director at the elementary level, Angelique DeCosta, our audit district coordinator, and Marla De La Cruz, our assistant director at the secondary level. We have had two different audits completed this year, and in response to those audits, we identified three priorities for our department. The first being redefining our in-district specialized programs and vertical alignment of those programs. The second is really ensuring that we have the correct staffing patterns at each of our buildings to meet our students' needs. The third is creating a team structure, a team chair structure as an administrative role. By focusing on those priorities, we'll be able to offer a continuum of care for our students and also decreasing the amount of students who will require a different audit replacement. Next slide. As you will see, we have five budget requests. All of these requests have been a reallocation of existing funding or potential use of contracted services funding. So first, we are highlighting a team chair. Currently, our school psychologists serve a dual role where they are team chairs and school psychologists. We would really like to separate those into two different positions. Our second ask is to hire two special education teachers, one at the elementary level, one at the secondary level. For years, we have really utilized a series of tutors to provide additional reading instruction as needed. And we would really like to be proactive as opposed to reactive and hire those staff members in district. We'd also like to repurpose a position to hire a school psychologist to really help with our therapeutic learning programs. That's an area of need we are highlighting, we're conducting an audit later this year. But that's something that has really stood out is making sure that as we are looking at audit replacements, we want to make sure that our district programs have the same level of staffing. In addition, we'd like to hire a board-certified behavior analyst to really work with our autism programs. This year, we were able to use funding from our contracted services to hire a part-time occupational therapist. That's something that we've done for the past eight years, and so moving forward, we want that to be included within our budget. Any questions so far?
Everything so far has zero, zero dollar, zero budget impact?
Correct.
Okay. I have to say, I'm just as kind of surprised as Josh. And can we talk about, which is a compliment, by the way, I just want to be transparent about that, in regards to the funding last year and the progress that's been made? You're confident that we continue and continue to mature this? I'm actually very impressed with what you're able to do at a zero cost. And would you say that's a result of like all of the funding that you got last year? And really curious to learn more about like repurposing existing positions, like what does that necessarily mean?
So two things I would say, which as you will see in the subsequent slides, we've really utilized every single position that was granted to us through the funding and additional grant funding to really make sure that we could staff our buildings appropriately this year. We are really trying to be cautious and fiscally responsible, knowing that we still have students who are exiting for audit district placements. And so while that is happening, we're trying to build our programs. We can't do both things simultaneously because we don't have funds to be able to do so.
Thank you for that clarification. Super important.
Yeah, sure, please. And it kind of goes back to what-
Excuse me. Do we have any more water in the house? Sorry.
Oh, great, thank you. You know, as we show savings and you'll see as we progress through the slides, there may be opportunities here that we're doing the best that we can to use from within. And we're keeping our staffing, which is fantastic, you know, unlike some other districts. But, you know, the cost, and I think Josh brought this up in the subcommittee, where contracted services versus having as our employee, there's significant savings with that as well. And they're digging deep, you know, and they talk about tutors, they're not, it wasn't bad that that was happening, but we can actually maximize and save more and have them be under our umbrella. So as we move forward, there may be opportunities down the road as we save to start putting things together that could be a cost savings, right? For example, we added the transportation coordinator because we knew we needed to flatten the curve. So there could be more opportunities down the road. It's just being able to come up with the budgetary here. And you'll see there's a few other things that are not quite settled yet that we might be able to dig into. I don't want to steal Christine under Team's thunder. But I think those are huge questions because, you know, again, we're appreciative of the big ask, but we need to be strategic. As we're building this forward, it has to be sustainable, right? So if we add X amount of positions and ultimately we get into a squeeze at some point because we're not flattening the curve, you know, that's not going to help us. So it's a lot of patience on our team, right? Because we know we need to get to this point, we need to do some things, but it just can't all happen at once.
No, I mean, I always come back to this because last year, this was one of our biggest asks. But I think it's incredibly impressive, the progress that you've made and, you know, the repurposing of existing positions to be where we are. But would it be fair to say that regardless of adding any additional cost to this, that we're still going to have students that inevitably have to leave because we're still building this out? And knowing that, is there a timeline? Because again, I did not expect immediate, you know, like impact in regards to students exiting as we build this. But is there like a horizon that we're looking at? Three years, four years where we can start capturing students before they leave the program?
Yes. I would say our autism program is where we really invested a lot of our effort this year. We had our first audit done by Constellations. And so they're coming back for year two next year to really help with the staffing patterns that we need in those programs. So the goal would really be a year from there, can we through our budget process sustain the budget impact of those positions without having to rely on that huge amount of money we're spending for a contracted service provider?
Okay, and will we, I did peek ahead, but is that horizon going to be demonstrated in the next few slides?
Yeah, we do have the projection out, like what we can add. So as things come off contracted, we add, savings come aboard. We know that we have to keep adding other positions for the continuum of services. Like I'd love to come forward now and say, yep, seven team chairs, right? I'd love to be able to say that, and I know my team would, but that's not responsible at this time. And I know that we need that. However, we have to do this in a systematic way to make it sustainable. So to your point, you know, we're flattening the curve and some students are still going out, but it's not, you know, we're not seeing, you know, we're managing, right? And it's through the hard work and efforts of the team because we added some things. And, you know, as I said, there's some alternate funding that we've utilized to help bring in some other support positions. So it's a big picture, it's a big puzzle for us. So the, right now, we're looking at just the snapshot where we're at. We have to present, we have to get the allocations, but we'll go forward to some more information.
No, no, absolutely.
But I appreciate you asking.
Right, and I say it, and for lack of a better term, is, you know, the impact on our budget in regards to audit district placements and the autism thing is, kind of if we view it as a wound, we're not going to heal it in one year, but can we shrink it? And is it going to heal? And are we going to get better? And I think it's really important to demonstrate this process and this horizon to PINCOM and to the town with the expectation of, look at what you've done so far and the fiscally responsible way that we're looking to repair this and the great work that you're doing. But to prepare the town and town select and everyone transparently to say, over the next few years, this is what has to be done to achieve that goal, if that makes sense.
And if I may, that's why, you know, this is important because we work through this as your lens is seeing this and knowing as we move forward that this isn't a final presentation. So all that feedback, and I know we'll have more, we'll talk about this in the end, but we need the feedback as we craft and meet back with our admin team because ultimately we'll see where we land at the budget hearing on the 24th. But this is feedback that we need to see, like we need to tweak this, tweak in areas here. And like, could there be a demonstration of areas that show even clearer what the town will expect? Because we do need to show, you know, the investment how it's paying off. I agree, but this feedback is huge, we appreciate it.
I guess as I look at this, I'm trying to appreciate more and more that what's happening here is really a significant restructuring of the way we deliver special ed services. We had the audit last year, or earlier this year actually, which gave us some things that we really needed to look at and perhaps do differently. And so you were in your first year, your team is in the first year really, and now you have the audit, and now you have a guideline, and now you're going to build the program to your vision and Dan's vision. And it strikes me that we've got to give you time to realize that vision. And so what you're looking for budget-wise, I would support because you need the time. You know, but I think responsibly, you've got to be able to come back to us and tell us, look, this isn't working. We need to do this, we need to do that. And, you know, even if it's looking forward to the next budget, you know, this is going to be a multi-year process. And be transparent and be open with us about what you need, that's all I ask.
So mine's going back a couple of slides, it's about the team chair. So this always comes up, we hear discussed, it's like almost like that really nice to have, but you don't necess, it's not necessarily mission critical, like you can continue without a team chair, is that correct? Is that kind of?
I would say it's mission critical.
Mission critical, okay.
Because what's happened over time, I think the town has invested in service providers working directly with students. But without that quality control feature of making sure that the services can be delivered the way they're outlined and making sure the parents understand those services, there's been a huge disconnect. And through our own internal audit, we found there is a lack of training and understanding of some of the components that are really necessary, and that role really is mission critical.
Got it, okay. But we don't have the number of team chairs that we necessarily need right now, right? That's the one area-
Correct, because we're trying to get there, so we're starting to build those.
Got it, okay. And then the other question is, it's like a psychologist was doing double duty, right? So what's the bandwidth on that? Like how did, what's, how were they splitting up their duties? Is it like a 80/20, is it a seven, like how were they splitting up their time?
I would think that depends on the building and the students they're serving. So that looks different at all buildings, and I think that's part of our concern.
Right, okay. Thank you.
To the point that the team has done a great job. Could we continue at the model we have? Absolutely. Will that bring the improvements that we need? No, it's just going to keep moving, and so we have to shift that mindset. And again, I guess the easiest connection is like we brought David aboard to do the quality control transfer. And I know that's separate than special education. Essentially, right now, we have Derek and Marla, they're doing double duty right now because they're running a lot of the initial meetings on top of their other administration as well. So being able to put chairs in place, right? And that's always the dual-edged sword, is we want to put forward-facing staff, but we also need that piece where we can really make sure that everything is where it needs to be. The school psychologist then, you go back and they could perform even more services for students. So, you know, this needs to be addressed. And we knew, you know, coming, we talked a lot about this and the audit shows it. But again, it's a piece where, again, if I ask for seven, you know, that's going to be a tilt. But can we add over time, could some things change within, I mean, there's things we can do. And I don't want to hold up the rest of this, but I think these are all excellent points.
And next slide. So this just really highlights the realignment for last year, allowing students to graduate from their current elementary schools in the upper grades, especially grades four and five, while really coming up with home base for all of our programs. And so this slide just highlights those pieces. And so some of our students are moving on to middle school, and as those cohorts are moving up, how are we reassigning staff to make sure that we're able to meet our students' needs? And this slide is another one that highlights all the support positions that were offered through the incredible funding from the town last year. In addition to the ESR funding and other grants that were allocated this year, we have support positions that have benefited all students, not just students on IEPs or five or four plans. And then we have positions that have really highlighted our in-district programs as well as program development. So for the next two years, this really focuses on our three programs. We're seeing our highest levels of students in audit district placements, which is our autism strand, our therapeutic strand and our language-based strand. And so in year one for our autism strand, we are asking for one BCBA. Year two, we would really look at an SLP to really help with some of those AAC or alternative and augmentative communication needs. In our therapeutic program this year, we'd like to hire a school psychologist. And next year, we'd really like to hire a BCBA. For our reading and language-based needs, the reason why it's reading and language-based is because what we've seen over time is some students haven't received the reading instruction they require. And so if we are providing that early, often and intense, students may not need a program specifically. So for this year, we're asking for two special educators, and the following year, the same request. And lastly, the administrative portion just highlights the necessity of a team chair or an assistant principal model, depending on the building and the level of funding.
So that's really it for the special education. So if I take the feedback from the committee, so coming up with another way to show like the progress we've made with the positions and kind of integrating it more into, you know, so they can see the return on investment, if you may say. But also maybe even projecting out further, maybe even year three as well. I know that's on the board as well. So we didn't want to inundate too much with the information, but be very clear. So that's feedback that we could use to come back and provide that clarity.
I mean, I'll add, the investment from fiscal year 25 at work slide is my favorite slide of the day. Because again, that was such a big investment last year. You take that compounded with your level request for the year and your reallocation. It's just fantastic work, like in, just from what I'm seeing. So great collaboration, great transparency. And I think it really demonstrates the work that you're putting in and it demonstrates to, you know, the select committee and to PINCOM. And it, just great work, thank you. Really great, love seeing this. Yeah, just one last, I think that last slide I think is great too because for any of those parents out there that are parents of special needs students, to note, it's not that we're not asking for more funding right now, we're asking for, we're chipping away at it. So I think it's great, so nice job.
I'm not sure if it falls under this umbrella, I think it may, but, and thank you for all of this. I know the EA situation is organic. Are we in position with staff to address our EL needs this year and potentially next year?
Yes, we're in good position right now to address those needs. So we do see that we're going to probably, as we move into next school year, we have, we'll have a reduction in the number of Ls, we'll still have over 100, but I think-
Right.
Yeah, so-
We have staff to-
Yeah, so with the staffing that we do have, that's budget, not just EA funded. We'll have enough capacity to- have enough capacity to cover that program.
Thank you.
If I could follow up on that. So that's important because as we're calculating, it's a moving target for us right now, right? It's, you know, as, as the shelters are closing down, the students are moving, Mary's done great work overall with the program, and so our staff and community has been great. But she's worked really closely with our point person at DESI, who really, you know, works directly with the state. So not only knowing the timeline, but as students move out, as they move into housing, you know, how that additional funding will follow. We've been advocating with Joan Lovely and Sally Curran, who will be here next meeting. We can talk about that advocacy for that supplemental budget. So that is important. Those are all the little things that do add up because we've used that funding to support other supportive positions as well. And also just the mechanism, like anything that we're able to save, we can move forward.
And I'm glad to hear that. I mean, I hear an investment in literacy in early grades, we're dealing with social, emotional, you know, mental health needs and behavioral needs, great. And we'll pick up some of the ELLs with some of our literacy work, but that's, that's a specialized, right, instructional practice. So it's another, another subgroup that if we're hitting all of these, that's going to pay off dividends, I think, you know, in the near future. So thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much. Thank you to our team. It's been an extraordinary long day for them because they opened school and worked through the day, so. Right? Okay. So just to wrap up, you know, as we look at our increases where, you know, a couple are out of district tuition and transportation, contracted services, and then certainly our, you know, supplies and materials and all the non-salaried, and then the obligation, then you can't, see, the, the big piece about the salary increase in the contract, I am too proud as we are of have that, having that. But remember, we bumped in all those ESSR positions from last year, they're part of this. We've also integrated contracted services positions too, so that's why we've been very careful here with this because we knew to be sustainable, right, we have to be able to absorb and we have a higher percentage next year and then to keep our staffing, to keep them, and we're good, in a good place there. And I'm proud of the work that's been done. So that's our overall, the proposed increases. But when we look to the offsets, this is why we've been able to make this ask come in lower than we did last year by far. We're utilizing circuit breaker at a substantial rate again, and we know, you know, that's not optimal, but we need it because that offsets and that keeps, keeps things down low for us. The grant funding that we have will continue for that, and obviously personnel where we can reallocate, right, while keeping our positions in, you know, people aren't losing jobs. I want to be very clear on that. We're looking for ways when, you know, there are retirements, can we reallocate and move things around? Absolutely. And that's what we should be doing. And then moving some from contracted services, which costs more per hour than with, with our hourly rates. So when you break all that down, you know, our overall, you know, proposed budget, and again, this is still a rough draft, we still have more work to do and one, one feedback from the school committee, but most of our budget is personnel, and it always is, and most school budgets are, right, with their salaries. And then we have substantial circuit, special education costs offset by circuit breaker. So that is a little misleading. That percentage would be higher, we're using a pretty big percentage to reduce that cost with circuit breaker. And then transportation is there at that 1.3, and we're hoping that that can change over time. So when you break all this down, you know, our per pupil expenditure is still lower than the state and has been, but we make it work. And then I think the bottom line is off the proposed budget is, you know, we're coming in, we're going to come in at 3.6 based on these projections right now. So taking a big dip out of circuit breaker, which we need, and the offsets, and we did some, see some savings, you know, obviously we calculate retirements and things like that in there. Coming at 3.6 is where we're at, right? And like we said, level service, the services are there, you know, in terms of minimal ask, and I always like to put this chart in here. You can see our 13 year average is 3.87, that includes last year's 6.41. I didn't include the average where we're at now at 3.6. That may change, right? As we come back to the budget hearing, that could change. But that's where we're at right now. So I would say that, you know, from a town side, I couldn't agree more, like we need to make sure that we're, we're providing our teachers, they deserve the best, our students deserve the best, and they can't wait. But we also have to be very smart and sustainable here because we don't want to be in a situation where we run off the fiscal cliff. So when you look at this, this is the key here, the potential savings. These are things that we just don't know yet, and we'll see where these go. For example, the chapter 70 funding, there is advocacy for increasing the foundational level from 75 to 104, and that's a substantial increase. Again, we don't have that finalized, that may not happen, but if it does, that's, that's help for us there, right? Circuit breaker, you know, and we have, again, there's a lot of advocacy to raise that 44 to 75. That's substantial monies right there. That replenishes the circuit breaker funding, right? So that will help us, that's why we know we're taking a pretty big chunk out of the circuit breaker, but we need that to get us through. And then potential transportation savings, so if you take 10% overall, it's about 315,000. Now that in itself, we can't say that that's what it's going to be. We hope it's that, maybe it's more, maybe it's less, we don't know, but anything we gain there goes back to, all right, what can we then kind of tack in there and make it work if we need to? So there's a lot of items that are potential there, but again, I think it's, it's being smart in the sense that, you know, our team works extraordinarily hard, our staff works very hard, and we're able to provide the services, and we're grateful for that support. And our next steps really are to take the feedback tonight, right? So we'll be able to work on a budget book by the end of next week that's more detailed in preparation for a budget hearing on the 24th. And that budget hearing, at that point, we hope to come to you with like, we're good to go, it's approved, because that will be the allocation or the percentage that goes to the town, right? Because they need time to work on their, you know, our presentation. So Pam will put together a budget book for them, that's Saturday, March 15th. We don't have the time yet, so we'll make the presentation to select board, and then in April, mid-April, they're working on the final date where we present the FinCom and then town meeting in May. So, you know, it's, it's moving. Again, you know, when, when we broke this down, I wasn't sure where we'd be at, and we've made some moves, and I have to thank Pam Crum for her extraordinary work. I have to thank our, our team that's stayed here for a long time, but they've been working really hard because they face our staff, they face our students, they face the families to make sure they get what they need, right? And certainly, you know, and Mary Warmers, I have to thank her as well because of the hard work she's done, not only procuring grants, working with our newcomers, but also working with the curriculum team. So it's a lot of work that's gone in just to get to this piece. So we're looking forward to any feedback from the committee, so then we can prepare and make any changes or tweaks. If we get any updates from the town, because they, they're always willing to help us and they try to help us. Again, will that final number be 3.6 on the 24th? Maybe, maybe not. We'll see what things are, but that's kind of where we're at right now. So certainly open for any questions or, again, feedback can be now, it could be, you know, email or whatever, and then bring it together, whatever is at the will of the committee.
The, the 3.6 number tonight is impressive. I'll just say that. I, I know it's not, it might not be the final number. To hear the thoughtfulness, to hear people sharing priorities in a very, in a very thoughtful way is very impressive to me. It makes me be very proud to be part of this process. So kudos to all of you, the team, everyone who works on this. I was just, it's very, as a past parent and going for, very encouraging to hear that type of thoughtfulness went into this work.
First of all, thank you, Dan, Mary, Pam, for leading the process. Thank you to everybody, principals, curriculum directors, assistants, everybody who helped you put together the budget and made this presentation tonight. You, you, the town should be proud of this process because it's extraordinarily responsible and well thought out and well presented. And I don't think that there's a question that any of you couldn't answer in terms of why you're doing what you're doing. So real kudos to you all and big thanks to you all. And I guess when I look back or look at this now, the need to bring a very responsible and maybe even somewhat conservative budget is very important because we are truly in uncertain economic times. We really don't know what the economy will look like three months from now, six months from now. It's very volatile because of, you know, what's happening with the administration change, frankly. And there may be no more Department of Education at some point. So it is important for us, I think, to, to be very responsible now because we don't know what revenue streams are going to look like in, like I say, even six months or a year. So my appreciation to all of you for what you do every day and for what you've done with this budget. So thank you.
I think that looking at the volume of positive adds that really don't play anything into the budget, you know, the biggest budget pieces I feel were just cost per unit raising this year. It had nothing to do with the fact that we're looking to add new positions, but we're reallocating. Most everything that was asked for tonight from, from all levels was either reallocating or just fact of prices of things going up that we already have in place, that you can't change that. You can't go to the supermarket and buy something for less than what it is. So you're just taking that few dollars. So I'm, I'm impressed with everybody today that you were able to look at what you had, look at what we need, and move it forward without having to make cuts left and right or ask for big asks. There's really no big ask across the board here. I appreciate all, all of your efforts to keep our students in the best place that they possibly could be. Thank you.
Yeah, I echo everything that everyone has already said. Unless there's any other comments, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn. Any discussion? I'm just kidding. All right, we are adjourned, and the next school, oh, vote, I, Paul, I'm so sorry, I was ready for the next meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None opposed, the motion carries. We are adjourned, and just a reminder, our next meeting is next week, February 10th, 6:30 PM. Thank you all. Have a good night.